We've been talking about the nature of God. We've been talking about, essentially, just to put everyone in the picture. With this Bible study, we've been going step systematically, step by step, from Genesis. But at the same time, we've been taking the detail just to talk about other important topics. And also answering questions. Every now and again, somebody will come up with a question about something in the Bible that they don't understand. And then we will spend some time talking about that. So because of that, we've talked extensively about the believer's authority, the nature of authority. We've also talked about prayer. We've talked about the abuse of prayer. And more recently, we've been talking about the nature of God. And that also feeds off, you know, essentially is a direct consequence of the teaching about prayer. Because we saw that, you know, maybe we don't really understand God. That's why we sometimes don't have our prayers answered, because we don't approach Him in the right way. So we are taking the time to try and understand who God is. Why He does things the way that, you know, sometimes we read about in the Bible. And so far, we've seen how God dealt with people back in, say, Genesis chapter four. That is really sort of, that's where God shows us His nature. Why? Because man had fallen, man had sinned. And in Genesis chapter four, actually starts in chapter three. In chapter three, God shows us His kind nature when He found out that Adam and Eve had broken His commandment and had eaten the fruit and were feeling, they were naked. The first thing He did was to clothe them. He clothed them before He punished them, before He pronounced any punishment. So you can see that nature, His kind nature. Then when you come to Genesis chapter four, what do we see? We see that Cain has just killed his brother. And instead of, you know, raining down punishment upon him, the Lord actually protects him. Because the Lord realizes it's a lose-lose situation. He's killed his brother. If I also punish him, if I kill him, then what am I left with? And we saw that God is a father, but sin made him into a judge. Okay, it's very important. Because people talk about God being judge, God will judge you, God will punish you, God will do this. That is how people, that's what people associate God with. Judgment, wrath, punishment. But it was because of sin, He never planned to be a judge of anybody. No father plans to be the judge of his children. So God never planned to be our judge. But we sinned. And when Cain killed his brother Abel, what did God say? What have you done? The blood of your brother is now crying out to me. What was that blood crying out for? Vengeance. God was now suddenly, it's like when your two kids come to you and say, Daddy, John hit me, or Peter hit me. What are they expecting? Justice. They want you to become my judge between them, the two of them. They want you to pass justice and that, to favor them. This is the situation that God found himself in. He was father turned judge. Suddenly, the blood of Abel was saying, are you going to let this guy go scot-free? And God had to act. He exercised His mercy still, but you will see from then on that there are incremental acts of men forcing God to act as a judge. And now we are beginning to pick up here, because we have started talking about Abraham. And what you will see is that God's relationship with Abraham also puts him in another situation, where he has to act in a certain way. So when you're reading the Bible, it's not, you've got to understand that transition that happens. The fact that you go from a God who is a creator in chapters one and two, where there's no sin, He doesn't have to judge anybody. You can't be a judge when there's no sin, when there's no wrongdoing. Then it happens in chapter three, sin appears, suddenly he's a judge. But in chapter 12 of Genesis, something significant happens. God finds a man. His name is Abraham. And this man is willing to respond to God and to work with God. Now, that was nothing new, because Enoch had worked with God. Noah had worked with God. So it was nothing new that Abraham was also working with God. But there was a difference. Abraham was a man who understood things from God's perspective. You see, it's one thing God coming to you and saying, look, there's going to be a flood. Build an ark, build a boat to save you and your family. It's not, I mean, yes, there are some people who would not respond to that, because they don't believe there's going to be a flood. But if you believe in a flood, it's common sense to start building an ark. It's just like if you are sitting in a building and somebody comes and says, there's a fire. If you believe there's a fire, you have to take action. And that action might be gather, you know, your loved ones, maybe one or two precious possessions, and just run outside. Okay? So if you like, the message that was preached to Noah, it was a message that he could derive benefit from. He could see himself in, he could see how this thing could be useful to him. It's very important to get this, because there's a parallel in the gospel, there's a parallel in the New Testament. Because Jesus often likens His second coming to the days of Noah, there's a lot of parallel there. So Noah received a gospel, if you like, that talked about how he and his family could be saved from the wrath to come, in other words, from the flood. And he believed, and he moved with godly fear and built an ark, and he saved his family. The people who didn't believe, of course, they didn't, weren't saved from the flood. But then when you come to Abraham, you see a different man. The message is, go to leave your father's house. And, I mean, set off on a journey, not knowing where you're going. I will show you where you're going. Now, that would have been hard enough for many of us. Imagine God telling you, okay, pack your load, leave. If you're in the UK, leave. If you're in Ghana, leave. If you're in Italy, leave, wherever you are, just leave. He said, Lord, where? He said, I'll show you later, just leave. But if I go to the airport, I can't just tell them, you know, I want to go somewhere. I'm pretty certain that if that happened to us, as you started packing, I started getting ready, the Lord will show you where you needed to go. In any case, the Lord did reveal to Abraham where he was supposed to go, and he arrived in the promised land. But the point I want to make is this, what was innate with Abraham at that point? He was in Mesopotamia. The land there was good. Flat land, well suited to, you know, animal farming, animal husbandry. He was keeping flocks, so he would have been, okay, his forefathers, everybody lived here, why did he have to leave? What was innate for him? Okay, I'm going to give you a certain plot of land. Land for land, big deal. And there's a whole journey, long journey involved. There wasn't much innate, if you like, the gospel that was preached to Abraham, it wasn't a gospel that he could profit from immediately, that he could say, ah, this is going to be good. It wasn't the kind of message that you brought home to your wife, and then the two of you danced together. It was one of those messages that, what's all this? You know, we're settled here, the children have already checked into the local school, every day have friends here, we are, things are going well, what's all this business of moving somewhere else? You don't even know where we're going, are you sure you heard from God? Can you just imagine this sort of conversations going on between Abraham and Sarah? Or maybe Sarah was a strong believer and straight away took the message on board. But here you are, Abraham received that message, he believed, and he set off. And he arrived in the promised land. And when he arrived in the promised land, it was still not clear why God had brought him. I'd like you to, you know, we won't be able to do that here, because we have limited time. But I want you to take time to read Genesis chapter 12, chapter 13, 14, all the way to 15. Read it continuously, and you will see something. The Abraham arrived in the land, and it wasn't quite clear why he had come. The land was occupied. There were cities, fortified cities. In other words, you didn't even have access to the cities. There were some hoops you had to jump through to be allowed to live in there. The land was very hilly. If you have ever studied the geography of Israel, you know, you can just go on YouTube and type Israel 4K, and you will see drone footage. And if you look at the area, you know, of Jerusalem, Hebron, all those areas, very, very mountainous. There's very, you know, it's hard to find the kind of flat land that he had in Mesopotamia, at least in that stretch of the land. There are other parts where, you know, you have flat land. But what I'm trying to say is, the Abraham would have arrived and thought, what's the big deal here? Why have I been dragged from that place here? The land is occupied, okay, it looks like it's very fertile, but it was fertile over there too, it wasn't too bad. I'm not getting it, I'm not getting it. At some point, the Lord came to him, I think it's in Genesis 13, the Lord comes to Abraham and says, Abraham, I want you to walk through the land, walk through the length and breadth of it. See, I have given it to you. Why did God have to do that? Because Noah, Abraham wasn't getting it, he wasn't, which means there was something that Abraham was supposed to see. You see, Abraham's story has been written in such detail, so that you and I can learn from it. God brings you into the land. You arrive, you can't see anything. That is exciting. But the Lord wanted him to see something. So he said, walk through the land, I have given it to you, I have given it to you. Abraham didn't ask questions until chapter 15. And if you remember chapter 15 very well, what had happened? In chapter 14, Abraham had had a battle with the kings of the east, who had come to conquer, you know, Sodom and other surrounding cities. And so, Lot, Abraham's nephew Lot, had been captured amongst the captives and taken along. So Abraham armed his 300 men and went after these guys and managed to rescue Lot. He defeated them and then rescued Lot. And on his way back, that's when he was met by Melchizedek, who blessed him. Then afterward, the Lord said, Abraham, I am thy shield and thy exceedingly great reward. You'll solve this question, why did God refer to himself that way? Do you know that God is everything? He said, I am. In other words, he begins a sentence, you can insert what you want there, of course, within reason. He's everything. Everything that you see around came from Him, out of His goodness. Have we all received? And grace for grace. So God is the I am. But in this particular instance, in Genesis chapter 15, verse one, he says, I am your shield and your exceeding great reward. Why did he say that? Because Abraham had just come from a battle. A battle where he had won. With 300 men, he had fought kings and their armies and won. And the Lord was just saying, you might think that this battle was just worn by you and your soldiers, you and your servants. I was there. I am your shield. I'm the one working behind the scenes. I am your shield, I'm your protector. And then he went on, your exceeding great reward. Why did the Lord mention reward at this particular time? He did, because Abraham refused to take any of the booty from the war. He had just defeated the kings of the east, and he got all the booty. But the booty belonged, they were things that had been taken from Sodom and all the other cities. Abraham said, I will not let any of these kings, surrounding cities, say we have made Abraham rich, or Abraham has enriched himself from the booty taken from our place, from our cities. So Abraham said, no, he refused to take the booty. And when he refused that, the Lord said, now this guy, this is somebody I can really work with. Not only am I his shield, I am his reward. It's like God said, I am presenting myself to you, Abraham, this day, some alternative to all the riches out there. My reward. Not the things out there, your reward. I am your reward. There's a fascinating lesson there for all of us. You see, Jesus has come into our lives to be our reward, to be our shield, to be everything that we want, everything that we've ever desired. Jesus has come into our lives to be that thing. The question is, do you recognize him as such? Do you see him as such? Noah received a gospel in which he could see a direct benefit. Build an ark and save your family. Come to Jesus, He will look after you. You will escape hell. That's okay. But did you notice that God says Abraham is the father of our faith, not Noah? Because God wants you and me to get higher than the gospel according to Noah. Then the gospel that says, I'm coming to Jesus because He's going to sort me out. I'm coming to Jesus because, you know, He has got the solutions, the answer to my needs. I'm coming to Jesus because He is my hostage out of hell. God wants us to rise above that gospel. That's why He calls Abraham the father of faith. Abraham's first journey out of Mesopotamia didn't offer very much. The incentive for that journey wasn't really much. Land for land, you could say. Then when he arrived in the land, when there was an opportunity to enrich himself, Abraham said no to that. But that was not all. Abraham kept himself from the citizens, from the inhabitants of the land. He kept himself separate. When God saw that in this man, a guy who had understood principles that would only come to light in the New Testament, principles that would only be written about by Paul the Apostle thousands of years later. Romans chapter 12, verse one and two. I beseech you, brethren, by the mercies of God, that you present your bodies a living sacrifice, holy and acceptable unto God. And then Paul goes on to urge believers not to be conformed to the world, but to be renewed, to be transformed by the renewing of their minds, so that they be able to discern the good, the acceptable, the perfect will of God. What is the message there? The message is, set yourself apart. Set yourself apart from the world around you. Don't allow the world around you to swallow you up. Because if the world around you swallows you up, you have lost your uniqueness. Your effectiveness as a Christian depends on your uniqueness. And when I say your uniqueness, I'm talking about your uniqueness in Christ. I'm not talking about carnal traits, I'm talking about your uniqueness in Christ. The fact that Christ, you being in Christ, be you being Christ, makes you unique. Jesus said, have salt in yourselves. If a salt loses its flavor, its taste, it's trampled underfoot, men have no use for it. Abraham's life teaches us separation, separation from the world unto God. He kept himself separate from the people of the land, and he kept himself separate from their lifestyle. Because even though he could not understand why God had moved him from Mesopotamia, he was beginning to get it that, this God has a plan. There's something He wants to do through me, I don't quite get it. But one thing is clear, if I mix with these people and I become like them, then I will be no use to God. And that's something I'd like to challenge all of us with, because the Lord has been challenging me with this. You are a holy priesthood. You are different. You have been called by the Lord to live a life separate from the rest of the world. Jesus said, I am not praying that you should take them out of the world, but that you should keep them. God has left us here to be shining light unto the people around us. But if we allow the world to transform us, we will be no use to the world. We must keep the light that is in us shining brightly. We must keep the salt in us, so that we can be useful to the world. If we lose that flavor, we will be of no use to the world. Abraham's life teaches us New Testament principles. That man lived them, he lived those principles. That's why he is so important, that Jesus quote, you know, wrote about, spoke about Abraham, Paul spoke about Abraham, God called him a friend. God called him a friend. God saw in Abraham somebody he could do business with, somebody who would understand him, somebody who would understand the level of separation required. It's the reason why, when you read the Bible, you come across certain stories about how God dealt with Abraham's enemies. And we're going to read one of those stories in a minute. So Abraham had a special relationship with God. He had a special relationship with God, and now, by now, you know why. He excited God. You know that there are, God is a person. He's not just some strange being out there, He's a person, and He made us in His image. There are things that excite you, there are things that excite God. There are things that get his heart jumping, he is excited by those things. And God is not excited by angels obeying Him. That's what we were created to do. He's excited by a being that He made like Himself, responding to Him, understanding His purpose, and having a desire to live in line with His purpose. That excites God. And when he sees that in a person, he calls that person a friend. So Abraham became a friend. And after he arrived in Egypt, sorry, after he arrived in the promised land, famine broke out. This was not part of the plan. God said, go to a land that I will show you. He said nothing about famine. So when famine broke out, Abraham looked left, he looked right, he thought, nothing to see here. He took off and he went to Egypt. So the Bible says, now there was a famine in the land, and Abraham went down to Egypt to dwell there, for the famine was severe in the land. And it came to pass, when he was close to entering Egypt, that he said to Sarah, his wife, indeed, I know that you are a beautiful, you're a woman of beautiful countenance. Therefore, it will happen, when Egyptians see you, that they will say, this is his wife, and they will kill me, but they will let you live. Please say you are my sister, that it may be well, that it may be well with me for your sake, and that I may live because of you. So it was, when Abraham came into Egypt, that Egyptians saw the woman, that she was very beautiful. The princess of Pharaoh also saw her and commanded her to Pharaoh. And the woman was taken to Pharaoh's house. He treated Abraham well for her sake. He had sheep, oxen, male donkeys, male and female servants, female donkeys, and camels. In other words, Pharaoh blessed Abraham because, or Abraham at this stage, because of his wife Sarah. But the Lord plagued Pharaoh and his house with great plagues because of Sarah's, because of Sarah, Abraham's wife. And Pharaoh called Abraham and said, what is this you have done to me? Why did you not tell me that she was your wife? Why did you say she's my sister? I might have taken her as my wife. Now therefore, here is your wife, take her and go your way. So Pharaoh commanded his men concerning him, and they sent him away with his wife and all that he had. Genesis chapter 12, verses 10 to 20. So at this moment, I'm going to open the floor and get some responses from yourselves. Basically, we've got a simple question here. Was God partial, or did He act in a partial way, when He decided to plague Pharaoh's house for taking Sarah from Abraham? So that's the question. Let's see if you have any responses. Okay. Welcome, Amma, and welcome, AutismDTGH. Yes, we are going to have a short discussion at this stage, so please feel free to unmute yourself if you are ready to answer, otherwise I'll be going, you know, from person to person, getting your responses. So Selena, what do you think? Do you think God was partial here?
I think God is a very partial God. It's not like God is partial, I think, everything that happened was always made to be so. And in this Sarah and Abraham case, I said, if you look into it, the whole thing together, the woman had a lot to play. You know, she also were a woman that, you know, that trusts God, that knew that what they were about to get into was not right. If she, you know, if Pharaoh had to go, you know, sleep with her, whatever, she'd know it was not right. So I'm sure she had to, like, tell them, said, that that's my husband. You know, and I just think, I'm still thinking about it, and you just.
I put you on the spot whilst you were still thinking about it.
Discussing it, I was asking him, so.
Okay, you keep on discussing, we'll come back to you. Yeah, okay, I'll go to you, Chrissy, what do you think? Do you think? Do you think there was any partiality here? Or do you have a perspective on this whole issue?
From hindsight and with other references in the Bible, God wasn't partial. The situation demanded, said that he had to react. No, he had to act, let me put it that way. For instance, with Egyptians, with Pharaoh, the only way he could reach out to them was the means that he used. Don't forget, Abraham is going to repeat the same thing with Abimele. But with Abimele, God did not act that way. Rather, he called the guy to dream. So it depends on, in our relationship and work with God, he always reaches us to where we could understand and accept him. So his dealings between and amongst us varies from one person to the other. So when you look at it from that perspective, then it will be more clearer, other than just taking one instance to define his character. So that's how I would put it.
Amen, amen, you're very good. Amen, okay. Let's see who else is here. Bishop, what do you think?
I think I'll go with also Chrissy. Yeah, what he said, I think I agree with him. So I'll go with what Pastor said, yeah.
Okay, okay, good. Araba, what about you?
Good evening. Well, in this instance, I don't thank you. But then I was asking myself that. But sometimes God decides to choose whom to love. So is that like in the case of Jacob and Tissau? So I was thinking that, okay, but in, I can be partial at times. And but in this particular, I thought, I think that no, wasn't partial. And you know, just, just I think by the sound of myself, Abraham, when he went there, he just is a corn man. He just wanted to get a lot of property. And that is just like the way. No, but I think that, I think that God was impartial. But I also asked him, can God be partial at times? Because he said, he chooses whom to bless, he chooses whom to favor. And then he decided to love Jacob.
No, I think you're raising a very important question there. Because you see, that thing is on many people's minds. And surely, when you speak to people who don't believe in God, they will bring it up. They don't have any fear of, say, bringing an accusation against God. You know, as believers, we won't do that. We will all look for a way to exonerate God. We'll say, oh, no, no, God is not partial. God can be partial, et cetera. But I believe us, they will just look at the facts and they say, look, here you have, a man has lied about his wife. He's lied about his wife. The Pharaoh has gone and got the woman because the guy said, it's my sister. If it's your sister, can I have her? Yes, off you go. Then the man gives you presents. The next thing we hear, God has now brought punishment upon the guy. And so, what did he do wrong? So when we say God is not partial, you know, what's the basis for saying that God is not partial? Other than that maybe we revere him and we don't want to bring an accusation. I just want us to look at the facts. Do the facts not point to him being partial? You know, so I'm going to ask now, Amma, I don't know if you would like, if you're, if you'd want to join in the discussion. Please feel free, we'd be very pleased if you can. If you can, then please unmute yourself and yes, tell us what you think.
I think I'll say something.
Yeah, oh, please go ahead, yeah.
I didn't join at the very beginning, but I'm just thinking about the word partial. And it means to me that there is favoritism somewhere or there's a bias towards something, so, or someone. So your question then is, is God biased? Or does he favor others more than another group? And it even makes me think about what's happening in the world today in the Middle East.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's my contribution.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's a very valid contribution, you know. It's so important for us to really dig deep. Because I discovered that the more I am questioned about my faith, the more people say, no, 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 this doesn't make sense. The more I grow roots into my faith. Because I've got to go and dig deeper to come up with the answers. Otherwise, all I've got is just a superficial sort of belief that I'm hanging on to. Even though there was a study that was done in the States, I think it was this, one of these BANA surveys. And they did it and it showed that many people who come from Christian backgrounds, grew up in Christian homes, many of them lose their faith in the first year of university. And you have to ask yourself why that happens. But when you study what goes on in university campuses, it's not that hard to know. All the people who, you know, the different people who, I don't know what word to sort of, what umbrella term to use for this whole group. But we're talking about people who really are against the Christian faith. Some of them used to be Christians. And today, they are renowned speakers and they go around these campuses and they hold talks. And they're so, for the sole purpose of pointing out what they see as errors in Christianity. And they will paint God, you know, they will paint a particular picture of God using the Bible, using passages like these. And if you don't really have roots, if you haven't grown roots into Christ, then it's very easy to look at the facts and just say, no, 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 I don't think I can worship this God. You know, I even heard a priest, a renowned priest, I'm not going to mention his name, but a renowned priest say that if God is A, B, C, and D, I can't worship that kind of God. And the things that he was talking about, there were things that were in the Bible that God says, I am, these are things I hate. So you can see that these things can come and shake your faith. It's so important that we grow roots in Christ. And that means that we study the Word of God and get to and answer questions. This is the reason why we're doing this Bible study. You know, we don't want to just skim through. We want to try and ask difficult questions. If we have answers, yes. If we don't have answers, it means we go back and do some more study, personal study. So very valid contributions all round. You know, and I feel that it's a valid question for somebody to ask, whether, you know, does God show favoritism? Which is probably a better way of wording it. Does God show favoritism? Or not? And if he does show favoritism, is that acceptable to us? We still think he's good? If he does show favoritism, like you just, you know, the previous person just said that, I suspect it's you, Hannah, you just said, what's happening in the Middle East? For example, you know, which, where does God sit? In this, and I'm sure if you ask a Christian, it will give you one answer. Even like Christians, there's a split among Christians. Some Christians who will go one way and then some who will go another way. We must understand who God is, his true perspective. Then we can be good ambassadors for Christ. So let's go into the word. Special relationship under scrutiny. God began a relationship with Abraham. We've established that. Now let's begin to look at the implications of God having that kind of relationship with Abraham. It was essential to God's redemption plan that he had someone like Abraham, someone who would understand what he was planning to achieve and would believe it. So that through his descendants, God could bring the Messiah. Abraham is a key person in the history of mankind. Without him, you don't have the Messiah. Abraham started the Jewish nation. And it was through that nation that the Messiah was born. So when God found Abraham, it was as, Abraham became a treasured possession for God, a highly valued possession. precious. Why? Because the plight of humanity hinged upon this one man. Now I'll ask you a simple question. If you found that kind of treasure, would you guard it? Or would you, in the name of being impartial, allow anybody to deal with that treasure anyhow? You see, what we've been seeing is God's role on the earth has been evolving. He went from being a creator and father to being a judge as well. Now here he is. He has found a person who not only is he a friend, but someone who will allow him to execute his role as savior. Because right in the Garden of Eden, when Adam and Eve sent, God promised there would be a savior. And here he found the man through whom that plan could be enacted. You can be certain that Abraham, from that moment, Abraham became the focal point of all of humanity. So you read from Genesis to, Genesis, chapter one, all the way to 12, I mean, to the end of chapter 11. And there are genealogies of different people, accounts of different people's lives. You get to chapter 12, it just narrows down. And from chapter 12 all the way to, you know, the late twenties, it's just about one man and his family, Abraham. Does God show favoritism? You could easily call that favoritism, but it is justified favoritism. It's the kind of favoritism that I am grateful that he did show that favoritism. Why? Because all of humanity's plight hinged upon it. There are times when what we might call impartiality is not as high a virtue as in this particular instance, favoritism. Imagine somebody saying to you that if you are truly a just person, you must treat your children the same way as you treat the neighbor's children. Would you accept that? Would you, would you think that was a fair deal? No, we treat our children differently and rightly so. Because we are the parents of those children. God gave those children to us to protect, to provide for, et cetera, et cetera. And he gave other children to other people. Showing favoritism to your children, it's nothing wrong with that. Abraham, through his faith, formed a different relationship with God than the rest of humanity. God didn't hate everyone else because of Abraham. On the contrary, because he loved the world, he had to preserve Abraham and have a good relationship with Abraham. Because what did God say in Genesis, chapter 12? Through you, all nations will be blessed. I just need you to get it right. And then I can extend the blessing to everyone. You know, reminds me of agriculture. You know, you, you grow seedlings in flower pots, maybe in your conservatory or into, but those are vast in cold climates. In Africa, you can do it just outside, you'll be fine. But you might grow seedlings in pots protected or you might create a bed and grow them. And then when they've grown up to a certain point, what do you do? You transplant them into the field proper. Why do you do that? Because it's a protected environment here. And then you can then transplant them onto the field where they can then grow. By that time, you know those, they will survive the elements more easily than when they were much younger, when they were tender. Abraham is like a seed that God sold that he might have a nation and that he might use that nation to bless, to transplant and to bless the whole world. That was his plan. And it was essential that he protected Abraham and gave him preferential treatment. So there's nothing to be ashamed about to say that God showed favoritism. Yes, he did. Yes, he did. I feel like we live in times where the world has its own morality and it's trying to force that morality on us. There is, the world's morality is based on equality. It has to be equal rights. It's not in the Word of God. We were made equal in God's eyes, all of us. But we have different roles. And the roles we have might mean that at some point, somebody looks like it's more special than the other person. It doesn't mean that God is not just. God can still be just whilst he protects one group because of what he's going to use that group for. And as we study this special relationship, we'll begin to discover that actually Abraham's descendants, they didn't have it easy. They didn't have it easy. Now let's, let's start reading some scriptures. Hear this word that the Lord has spoken against you, oh, children of Israel, against the whole family which I brought up from the land of Egypt, saying, you only have I known of all the families of the earth. Therefore, I will punish you for all your iniquities. Amos, chapter three, verses one to three. What is God saying? You guys are special to me. I have known you in a way that I haven't known the rest of the world. I've had a relationship with you that I haven't had with the rest of the world. Therefore, I will punish you. So when we're talking about favoritism, that's one bit that we often forget. No nation has suffered more than this nation. And why? Because we're God's special people. Because God was using them to bless the whole world. And through, and because of that, because of that, they were not at liberty to live like the other nations around them. So I told you about how Abraham left Mesopotamia to come to the promised land. That for a long time, it didn't seem clear what benefits there was to this journey. To show you that his special relationship doesn't mean that he had it easy. No, his special relationship brought him a lot of difficulty and many times, and brought a lot of difficulties to his descendants. Here, there's a passage from Leviticus. God first pronounces the blessings that will come upon Israel. But then he doesn't stop there. He says, but if you do not obey me and do not observe all these commandments and if you despise my statutes or if your soul abhors my judgments so that you do not perform all my commandments, but break my covenant, I also will do this to you. I will even appoint terror over you. Wasting disease and fever shall consume the eyes and cause sorrow of heart. And you shall sow your seed in vain, for your enemies shall eat it. I will set my face against you and you shall be defeated by your enemies. Those who hate you shall rain over you and you shall flee when no one pursues you. And after all this, if you do not obey me, then I will punish you seven times more. And after all this, if you do not obey me, then I will punish you seven times more for your sins. Does this sound like favoritism to you? I would say thank you very much for this favoritism. You keep your favoritism. I want to be ordinary. I want to be just be one of those that you don't favor. You see, Ab- Israel's favoritism brought them a lot of trouble. I remember, um, I was listening to a Jewish, I might remember if it was a rabbi, but, um, he is a Jewish, no, he wasn't, definitely not rabbi. But he was, um, talking about God's special relationship with Israel. And the guy said, was saying to God, God, please go and love someone else. Just leave us alone. Go and love someone else. Their relationship with God did not mean that they had it easier than the rest of the world. On the contrary, things were much harder. Paul writing to the Athenians. You know, Paul, um, no, it wasn't writing actually. He was speaking to the Athenians in Acts, chapter seventeen. Paul was walking through the city of Athens, and he saw idols everywhere. And he was troubled. Eventually, he said that the God that made all things is given that he himself made all things, how can he possibly be represented by objects? Let's read. See, therefore, since we are the offspring of God, we ought not to think that the divine nature is like gold or silver or stone, something shaped by art and man's devising. Truly, these times of ignorance God overlooked. But now commands all men everywhere to repent because he has appointed a day on which he will judge the world in righteousness by the man whom he has ordained. Acts, chapter seventeen, verses thirty, thirty-one. So here, Paul says, the times of ignorance God overlooked. Let me expand on this a, a, a little bit. You see, when he says, the times of ignorance God overlooked, what he's saying is, oh, there's a message here. Let me just check what's going on. Okay, no worries. Um, thank you for joining us anyway. Good. So, um, when he says the times of ignorance God overlooked, what does that mean? What he's saying is, when people were worshiping idols, living for themselves, not caring about the commandments of God, et cetera, when the Gentile nations were doing that, God overlooked it. But he did not overlook one single instance of idolatry in Israel. So when Israel sent, God punished them. But when the, when the Gentile nations did the same things that Israel did, God sometimes overlooked it. So when we're talking about God being partial or God being showing favoritism, well, guess what? I would say in many respects, the Israelites had a raw deal. They had a raw deal. It is natural to wonder whether God, you know, God shows favoritism. However, the evidence suggests otherwise. God disciplines those whom he loves more severely if they go wrong. God has every right to be partial, by the way, to show favoritism. Because the Lord says, that's not the potter have power over the clay from the same lump to make one vessel for honor and another for dishonor. Romans, chapter nine, verse twenty-one. So basically, he says, look, God can do whatever he wants. But God doesn't exercise that right to do whatever he wants. Even though he chooses the, 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 the Jews, or rather, he chose the Jews, he chose them not just so that he would just be, you know, show them favoritism. He chose them for a mission. And that mission required him to protect them. Then he said, even if all nations cease to be nations, the nation Israel will never cease to be a nation. It will always be a nation. Many have tried to wipe Israel from off the face of the earth, but they haven't succeeded. Because God won't let it happen. So this, I'm saying all this just to show you that God is not partial for no reason. God doesn't show partiality for no reason. There is a reason for it. He has the right to do so because the potter can do whatever he wants to the clay. But his nature would stop him from just blindly choosing somebody to love and another person to hate. He chose Jacob over Esau. But there's a reason why he chose Jacob over Esau, even though both of them came from Abraham's lineage. Esau was not interested in the things of God. Jacob was. At least he would become eventually. And so the Lord chose him. So all of this, we are trying to understand God's nature and we are not running away from the difficult passages in the Bible. That's what we are doing. We are trying to bring those difficult passages on board and, and to analyze them so that we can tackle them appropriately. Next thing, like the rest of humanity, Jews must repent and believe to experience God's eternal salvation. So you see, imagine that God took Abraham and his descendants, and he was going to use them as a vessel, as a tool to bless the world. But in so doing, we're saying he showed them some partial, some, some favoritism. Well, guess what? When Jesus arrived in person and they rejected him, what happened? The Lord said, I am leaving you, your house desolate. You will not see me again until you say blessed is he who comes in the name of the Lord. Which means the Jews are in exactly the same position as Gentiles. If they don't believe, even though they are descendants of Abraham, if they don't believe the gospel, they will face the same consequences as any other person who doesn't believe the gospel. Think I've explained this already. Now we're going to be looking at some aspects of God's relationship with Abraham. We're going to be looking at the personal, where they are putting from the very personal angle. God visits Abraham. Then the Lord appeared to him by the caribean trees of Mamara as he was sitting in the tent door in the heat of the day. So he lifted his eyes and looked. And behold, three men were standing by him. And when he saw them, he ran from the tent door to meet them and bowed himself to the ground and said, my Lord, if I, if I have now found favor in your sight, do not pass on by your servant. Please let a little water be brought and wash your feet and rest yourselves under the tree. And I will bring a mousse of bread that you may refresh your hearts. After that, you may pass by inasmuch as you've come to your servant. So it's Genesis eighteen, this one to fif- versus, verses one to five. So Abraham hurried into the tent to Sarah and said, quickly, make ready three measures of fine meal, knead it and make cakes. And Abraham ran to the herd, took a tender and good calf, gave it to a young man, and he hastened to prepare it. So he took butter and milk and the calf which he had prepared and set it before them, and he stood by them under the tree as they ate. Genesis eighteen, verse one to eight. Okay, so why did God visit Abraham? Abraham had many encounters with God. Nevertheless, the one described in Genesis eighteen is special and deserves special mention. So the Lord appeared in human form to interact with Abraham on a very personal level. Before the fall, God had a special relationship with mankind. He visited the garden to commune with Adam and Eve and to present himself as an alternative to the tree of knowledge of good and evil. Let me explain this a little bit. You see, in the garden, God was coming to Adam and Eve to have fellowship with them. But what exactly was going on there? God had put a tree in the middle of the garden. That tree was a tree of knowledge of good and evil. And you always have to ask yourself this question, why did he put it there in the first place? And he didn't just put it somewhere hidden in the middle. Which means it was there as a choice. It was something that was there presenting itself as a choice. But at the same time, God was also coming to the garden. And God was showing them there are two paths in life that you, you guys can take. One is this, the other one is me. The other one is you stay in fellowship with me. You get to know me. You get to grow spiritually. I get to reveal myself to you. The other path is you go your own way. You eat that fruit and you go your own way. You do things your own way. God had a very personal relationship with Adam and Eve. But that was lost in the garden. Now here, in Abraham, God finds a man that he could come to and have that kind of fellowship with. And the Lord wouldn't pass that opportunity. He came and visited Abraham in person and sat down and ate with him. But as I explained last week, God came to Abraham and he talked about Abraham's issues. What were Abraham's issues? He didn't have a child. But then God also talked about his own issues. What was that, what was going on in Sodom and Gomorrah that he wanted to address? So then you see the kind of fellowship that God wants to have with you and me. Not just one that says, you know, you just praying to God, crying out to God, getting answers just to meet your own needs. The one that says, Lord, what do you also want? What do you want for my life? What do you want me to do? That's the kind of relationship God wants us to have with him. God shared his plans with Abraham. And Abraham understood God's intentions. As I explained earlier, Abraham kept himself separate. He did not let Isaac marry a Kenyanite woman. He did not embrace the practices of the people living in the land. Abraham lived like a pilgrim in the promised land, which is what the Bible tells us believers to do today. Abraham had been promised the land, yet he was content to live in a tent. By faith, he dwelt in the land of promise as in a foreign country. Dwelling in tents with Isaac and Jacob, the heads with him of the same promise. For he waited for the city, which has foundations, whose builder and maker is God. And God called him a friend. So God's relationship with Abraham is a picture of the relationship that he wants with all of mankind. God wants, wants more than religion. He wants us to get to know him. He wants to share his plans with us. Okay. So I think I'm going to round up here. Today, what we've been talking about is God's relationship with Abraham. And it's been in the context of understanding why God acts the way that he does. Some of the things that God does, sometimes we don't understand. And sometimes people lay accusations at God. And sometimes we believers, we're not very confident in responding to some of those criticisms against God. Because maybe we ourselves have a little bit of doubts. We, we have questions about, hmm. Yes, maybe God could have acted differently in this situation. Why, why did he act that way? And so we are not very confident ourselves. But you know what? There's no need for us to be ashamed of God's actions. If we study the word of God carefully, we will understand why he did things the way that he did them. And we can talk confidently about God. So that will be, that'll be all for today. Um, let me just see, there are not many of you left now. Let me just see if there's something, if there are questions, any burning questions on your mind, anything you would want to ask about. It doesn't, you know, maybe related to this topic, but it may be something else. That's fine. Please feel free if you have any questions. Or if you have any contributions that you want to make. Any questions? Abba, you normally have a question.
I don't really have a question. Except that, you know, I'm still you know, sorry, you figure, you know, this question of reverse feminism. I'm still trying to make a sense out of it.
Okay.
Like you said, I'm still not push, you know, like. And that is one thing, you know, you have to be um, good to yourself, you know, like not because sometimes, like you said, we said this, I remember in church one guy, when he's, when we are this Sunday school and he wants to ask the question, then he say, eh, introduce this to me, fuck this all. You know, like thinking that that question is a no-go area.
Yes.
That asking that question.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been so thinking so hard because and I was even thinking when, um, is it Amma or, I don't know. I, um, was talking about, you know, the middle is, um,
Yes.
What is happening, and I was thinking now, will God give a, a land that is for some people? And said that, because I know that the Israelites, I mean, both of them, they said they went to, they had to fight people who were already dead. So why would he even say that, I'll give you food? When some, if someone have already taken you for that. And then you decide to try and kick those people out, you know? So I was thinking, and this thing you said about that if you are Israelite, that you are a chosen nation or you are, it doesn't mean that you have automatic salvation.
Yeah.
He said that you have to, you know, um,
You still have to repent and believe.
Repent and believe and work out for salvation.
Yes.
Look, when you said, it reminds me of a, a Bible study we had. And our pastor said, opposites of what you're saying. He said, they here, they have been chosen and that, and it's like, well, it was something spontaneous. Everybody said, eh, you know, we, we, that day, we thought it seemed like, it was like a we say we never understand, you know. We didn't agree, but you know, so when we said this, I said, I wish.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I'm thinking so hard that I don't know, I don't know what to make of all this. Um, my head is just spinning around.
But it's very good that you're thinking, because that's what the word of God is supposed to do to us. We're supposed to think, you know? And we are not supposed to have everything laid on silver platter, you know? You're supposed to go back home and think, hmm, there's some things here that I'm not quite sure that either I agree with or I don't quite understand. And then you start studying the word of God yourself. You understand? Like, a long, long ago, I was going for a walk in the woods and the topic on my mind, now you're talking about favoritism in relation to Israel. Now I was thinking like Africa. And I said, God, I don't understand this. Why is the plight of Africa, the plight of, let me just be blunt and say, the black man? Why is it like this? Why do other nations, powers take advantage of Africa? Et cetera, et cetera. So that I was just pouring my, my heart to God, out, out to God. And you know what? The response that I got, it's not something that I had ever considered before. You know, ah, you, you talked about people in the land, in the promised land, and then the Jews going in there and taking over the land. Why did God do something like that, didn't you? Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, I was asking those questions. And then suddenly it dawned on me. There's a passage from, um, Acts, chapter seventeen, where God says that he has appointed for every nation on earth a particular piece of land. a particular piece of land with its boundaries. That is their own. So Ghana has in God's mind a plot of land where the people, the ethnic, all the ethnic groups in Ghana are supposed to reside in. The same for all the European countries and the same for Israel, for every nation. Then it dawned on me that when something is given to you and it's your possession, it's no longer God's job to guard that thing for you. You must guard it yourself. Before you step out of your house, what do you do? You lock your door. Why do you leave your door open and say, you know what? I love everybody, I'm a kind person. If people want to walk into my house and then, you know, enjoy themselves, that's fine. Why, why, why don't you lock your door? Why do you lock your door? Why do you protect your possessions? Why do you take up insurance? Why do you do all of these things? Why? Because there's a concept of ownership. What is yours is yours. God gave it to you. In Israel, God assigned every tribe a piece of land. And he said, don't ever let go of that piece. If you, 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 before you, you pass it to your, to your, your, pass the land on to your children and it must stay within that tribe. All those things were written down. You have something about these things. What I discovered is that when you, you, when we are talking about nations and geopolitics and things like that, we need a paradigm shift. We can't go there with the same thinking that we have towards into the gospel, uh, believe and be born again and all of that. There are different set of principles that apply to those matters. For example, Jesus said, if somebody slaps you on the, on one cheek, turn the other cheek. But you go in New Testament, the same New Testament, you read in Peter. Peter says that the, 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 the authorities, they bear not the sword in vain. He said that if you break the law, then you must, you must fear because those who keep the law, they bear not the sword in vain. So those people have been authorized to inflict punishment upon you if you break the law to the point of death. And God is not going to punish them for doing that because they would be executing a law that was a right, an authority that was given to them. You look at that and then you look at turn the other cheek and all of that, where, where does that come from? And forgive seventy times, seventy times seven. How does that fit in? Why doesn't the, the government forgive me if I, if I don't pay my tax? If I, if I, if I break the law, why, why doesn't the government, you understand me? No. There are two different sets of principles. So when we begin to look at geopolitics, why this nation, that, this, the difference, you need a completely different mindset to be able to understand that. It's the reason why the Old Testament is there. I didn't used to understand, I said, God, it's almost like we have a different God in the New Testament. You know, in the New Testament is doing this, bringing judgment, and then the New Testament is just meek and gentle, what, what's, what's that all about? The old is there to teach us certain principles and there's those, those principles, they are still necessary. When you are talking about a nation, when you're talking about national level order and things like that, geopolitics, those things are still applicable. So I know that we will not be able to exhaust this topic completely and I won't be able to answer all, all the questions or, or the doubts. But what I just wanted hopefully to do is to help you see that there is far more to this picture. The merely taking the four gospels and trying to explain everything going on in the world through that is just not going to work. You need to look wider, broader, does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And you know, uh, yes, just yesterday, I was listening to a reverend minister and I was shocked to and answer he gave to a question. Because someone just said, oh, of the practices in the Old Testament, they were worshiping idols, just like African traditional religion. So they were, the Yahweh, the, you know, those was the gods. And the reverend minister said, yes, that, that is true. The, in the God in the Old Testament, Yahweh is different from the New Testament God. And you know, and because of that, and people were bombarding him with questions. You know, he thought sometimes they confuse people. He said, there are two different Yahweh. And even he, he went on to say that when you go to Wikipedia and you, and you Google Yahweh, Yahweh, Wikipedia will give you a picture of Yahweh, it's a god who is. And so that god is, is like, yeah, almost like a lesser god. Not the cre, not the creator.
Yes.
You know, uh-huh. But the New Testament, Jesus is a different god and. And you, you because it's, I said, I don't know, it's like a whole lot of confusion. Because if this was coming from someone else, not the reverend minister. And maybe, you know, you can, can say that, but.
Which, which church was he from?
He, he mentioned, I have to check and he mentioned, you know, now everybody is a, is a. I love this, not a, the Orthodox, from the Orthodox Church.
Okay, okay.
One of these, um, one mind churches.
Yes, one mind, okay. So obviously the free, the, the, the Orthodox churches, the established churches, you know, Catholic, um, and all the way down to Methodist and rest. They, they have a doctrine that they stick with. Um, and so maybe Methodist less, less, so I have to be honest. And there's some Methodist priesters saying some very, very outrageous things. But you know, there are some things that are harder, you wouldn't hear a Catholic priest say, for example. It's not, that doesn't mean that I'm saying that, you know, the Catholic Church is the church to go to or something like that. But because some of these churches actually have an established doctrine, they at least have a starting point and, and they make sure that they don't depart from that. Whereas many of these churches that have just sprang up out of nowhere, they don't have any foundation. So they can change their mind, they can change their teaching, they can say whatever they want, whatever comes to mind. They can just tell you they've received a new revelation. You know, but we can't, we can't build anything that Christ hasn't built. You know, we, we, we can't build anything that apostles, the, the, the foundation that apostles and the prophets of, of the first century church laid down. We can't depart from that foundation. And somebody saying that Yahweh of Old Testament is a different god from the God of the New Testament, I mean, that's, that's error, that is real error. And I can see why somebody might think like that because they don't, they don't have that scriptural grounding to be able to defend the things that are written in the Old Testament. Because the things that the Old Testament are so different from some of the things in new, it seems like, hmm, this like, almost like a different god. It's much harder to actually tell people that, look, it was the same God, but there's a reason why these things happen. And then go into the reasons. That requires a lot of study, which sadly many people don't do. Yeah. Good, that was very good discussion there. And as I, 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 I know, I knew I could always lean, uh, uh, this rely on you, however, to bring up something interesting to discuss. Um, good, um, what about you, Selena? Anything you want to bring up, any questions? Or any contributions? And David, I know you're also there.
Um, I think the topic today is very, very interesting today, very interesting and for you to shine a light upon the things that people can be doubting in the Bible and not actually knowing, you know, what's done, where we stand as a Christian when it comes to things like that. I think it's really, really good. Um, I don't even know what much to say, I'm just thinking about the whole thing, you know?
Okay, okay. Okay, good, good. Okay.
Like, like me, I, I would like to like go listen to it again and again.
Okay, okay. Okay. But good, good to hear your voices. Yeah. Okay. And Bishop, anything to add before we finish?
Thank you so much for today.
Thank you too.
You know, I will teach. And what, what we like so far is that we have to be a friend of God. When Moses and Abraham, I can say that these people were God and of God. Why is it so they, because they carry his peoples? So when we know our peoples, then we become a friend of God. So one thing, if we, well, if we want God to be like we, we being a favorite of God, it means we have to know our purpose. We have to know why we here, what are we doing? So when we know our purpose, then we become a friend of God. And then God can favor us in a lot of things we do. So, um, it's not that, um, we, we, we are saved and that's it, no. God has assigned something for us and we have to look at things that he has assigned for us, we have to look for it. And it, it has to be a constant thing, a pretty daily thing to search for it. God, what do you want me to do? And how to execute. God bless you for today.
God bless you too, yes. Um, so important for us to, um, yeah, discover our calling. Um, I've been putting some audio messages on the, and the WhatsApp group, um, about calling. Um, I'm sort of going through my archives because I've got, um, a lot of these messages that I record from time to time when they're depending, sometimes I'm going for a walk, sometimes I've even been driving, then I, I record. So, um, yeah, and, um, yeah, when you all have time, please go through them because, um, the Lord might use that to bless you, to to help you to discover your calling, to discover how, how to fulfill your calling. Thank you all for coming and for all the contributions and we shall meet again by God's grace next week.